You ready? Two thumbs up. Good afternoon and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Richcrest City Council. We have called this meeting a little bit early at 5:00 PM because we have a closed session. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and begin with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
We have four present. Ms. Breeden is excused absence.
Okay. Next is, do we have any changes for the agenda for this evening? If I hear none, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
I believe we're gonna vote. He's, there we go. And we might have a problem because of Ms. Breeden. So let's do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mayor.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Next is, any public comment on our closed session? Our closed session this evening is Conference of Legal Counsel for Existing Litigation. Name of the case is Mojave Pistachios versus Indian Wells Valley Water District at all? Is there any public comment from the floor? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and excuse ourselves into closed session. Regular session will begin again at 6:00 PM. It's time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to our Richcrest City Council meeting. We are going to come out of closed session and we are going to have one slight change to the agenda. We are going to move item number three on the discussion, action items, to immediately following the attorney report out of closed session. And we'll go ahead and begin with asking everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, who will be led tonight by our good friend Maverick, who's joining us on the dais this evening. If you can stand and join us.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Rajaratnam, if you'd leave this in the invocation, please.
Please join me in prayer, if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Lord, thank you for protecting us throughout this day. Lord, thank you for the beautiful country you have given to us. Lord, let this country be a beacon of hope to many other countries, Lord. I pray for our troops who are in harm's way. Lord, protect them from all evil. I pray for our police department, Lord, as they put their lives on line for us. Lord, give your protection to them and let there be peace, let there be love, let there be hope among the citizens of this country, let there be unity, Lord. Lord, I pray for the opportunity which you have given to us to serve on this council. I thank you for this beautiful city which you have given to us and the beautiful people who serve this community, especially people like Mr. Doug Lou, Lord, who sacrificed their lives, who put their heart and soul to give their best to this community, Lord. Lord, be with us as we discuss many issues which are important to this community. Lord, thank you for children like Maverick, who show interest in city politics. Bless him and fill him with your knowledge and glory. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. If I could ask everyone just a round of applause from Maverick. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next is our attorney report out of closed session. And also, as I said, it will be moving item number three, discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority as part of this discussion. Keith. Well, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and we're gonna go ahead and proceed with the presentation of the key to the city and then give them a moment to sort out some technical difficulties, okay? If I can ask the council to join us at the podium and for a presentation.
Let's see, I'm always looking the other way, so I'll try to turn this way. Doug, so I was really excited to get the opportunity to nominate you for the key for the city. You know, when the mayor first brought this back to the council, the idea of giving out keys to the city, making sure that we recognize people who are deserving. I don't know about everybody else, or the rest of the council, but I sat, you know, running through my head, who are those people? Who are the folks that give tirelessly? And not just in the last few years. We all know that it's easy to show up for a few years, maybe four or five years, but somebody like you, Doug, who has given back to this community and others, just countless years of public service, you've given your life, given of your life, it's impressive. It's something to aspire to, and so your name was forefront in my mind. And so Doug, if you're okay with it, I know it's in the agenda, I don't know if you guys got to see it, but I'm gonna read a few things that I'm not usually, you know, I don't usually wanna sit here and just read to the audience, but I thought that it was important enough to read these things, if that's okay. So, those of you who don't know, Doug, Doug has faithfully served this community since he moved here from Victorville in the early 1990s. He has served for countless years on multiple nonprofit boards. He has served with the Chamber of Commerce and serves as an officer in the Old West Mounted Lawman Group. Do you still do that, Doug? Doug currently sits on the Desert Empire Fairgrounds and the HS UMD Board of Directors. Chip Holloway said, Chip, where are you? I'm gonna quote you if, you ready for that?
I'm listening there.
Yeah, okay. Chip Holloway said, "Doug's footprints are everywhere, from bringing the first demo derby here and then helping bring it back, to more recently helping us manage the most comprehensive and aggressive capital improvement project planned in years. Doug has an incredible corporate knowledge of all things fair and fair grounds. Doug is always willing to offer sage advice and offer assistance above simply words when called upon." And I'll take a pause just to say that I can personally attest to this. We mentioned it real quick at the USO, but I've known Doug since I was very young, probably Maverick's age, and I gotta say that sage advice has always been right there to rely upon when needed. Doug is the father of the Richcrest Petroglyph Festival. He and his wife, Maris, have a passion for the cultural significance of our local petroglyphs and what they mean to our region. Under Doug's guidance, the festival was curated and has grown over the past nine years. He has been instrumental in the petroglyph branding all over town as well. Doug's incredible efforts at the RACVBA have been influential in keeping Richcrest and the entire Indian Wells Valley at the forefront of filming for almost two decades. So for those who don't know, a lot of the filming that's happened, a lot of that advocacy work, it's because of Doug. He's built positive relationships with major film industry players that will pay dividends to our community for years to come. Most importantly, under Doug's leadership, the RACVBA Tourism and Business Improvement District was created. And again, for those of you who don't know, we're not always paying attention to the machinations of how cities and municipalities work. That's huge. That's huge in keeping things running for the future. Doug is generous, kind-hearted, values relationships, and genuinely cares about people, this community, and the future of this town. Doug, thank you for all that you've done, and if, would you please come up so I can present you the key to the city? Thank you, Doug. So, do you have some words to say, Doug?
Sure.
I'll try to get through this, Ricka. Thank you, Kyle, for the kind words. I appreciate that very much. As he said, "I was here in 1990, came in 1990, and I had no idea to ever be standing up here in front of you folks. It's a great honor. I love this city. I thank the council for this award." I think there's other people in this room, a lot of you in this room, that have carried the torch with me for many years. If I started, I'd probably be here all night pointing out, but I got the chip, I got Olaf, you know who Olaf is? He's the chips all the petroglyphs in town. My wife, my wonderful wife, she would listen to my stories when I come home at night and said, "Oh, boy, not another one, here we go." And, but she was always supportive of me. And Barry, he's always supportive of me. I mean Sharon, I could just go all the way around the room. Mr. Porter in the back, he was always supportive of me. Hey, buddy. So, I just wanna thank everybody. I did get a call from a very important businessperson in town, and he said, "I can't be there tomorrow night." And we all know this man, I won't mention his name, I won't dare do that. He says to me, "I want to congratulate you for being able to get the key to the city." And I said, "Thank you." So I get all puffed up with who he is, you know, so how do you even get my number? But he got it from somebody, probably from Carrie in the back. And I said, "Well, thank you." And he goes, "Well, I need to ask the question. They're gonna give you a key." I don't get it, he said, "Why don't they give you a credit card that has a little slipper so you just put it on the door and the door opens?" I go, "Yeah, only you would tell me that." But I just wanna thank everybody, and it just, if it was all you guys, I wouldn't be standing up here. I really wouldn't be, because everybody's been so supportive. Carrie, she's back in the back over there hiding. She's got my job, which I'm glad she has. We worked together for four years for the RACVBA, and I think she's gonna, I feel really good that she's gonna carry on the torch, and she's always calling me, asking me for different things, and I'm there for support, and I'm not moving anywhere. I'm staying here, and I'm gonna be supportive of the community as best I can. And you know what? There might be another project coming down the road that we might do, so just gotta stand by. So I wanna thank everybody.
So Doug, before you get set down, would you mind coming up to the front, having a picture, maybe having your family up?
Just bring your pack. Bring them out. We don't give you the blizzard when you leave it behind. I don't. My friends on the side. I think your promise is...
Can we have counsel on one side, family on the other side, which will lock the key which I identified?
Okay. Family on that side.
With the man in front, kinda not blocking the key, but there you go. Very good. Okay, everybody, look at the top of my head and maybe you'll climb. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. Can follow you.
Thank you for your services, community. We appreciate it on behalf of all the citizens. As I mentioned, we had a little technical snafu. It looks like we are back online, so we're gonna go back to the city attorney report out of session, as well as item number three on our agenda, discussing the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Lemieux.
Sure. You guys can all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, the city council met in closed session to discuss the item identified as the groundwater adjudication. City council received a report from the city attorney regarding that matter. No reportable action took place, but I understand that we wanna turn our attention to the item discussing the GA. On that note, I do have a topic to raise with the city council. That concerns a facilitation. As some of you know, there was a facilit, there is a facilitation that was organized through the Department of Water Resources by the water district to discuss items of importance regarding groundwater and groundwater management in the basin. The city council previously, on our recommendation, did not wish to participate in the facilitation because of concerns that we had regarding the impact of the facilitation on the GSP process through the GA, that is, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, through the Groundwater Authority, as well as the impact of the facilitation on the adjudication. I'm very pleased to report that we've had the opportunity on behalf of the city council to share our concerns with the Department of Water Resources regarding this facilitation. I think, as a matter of fact, I recall that at a prior city council meeting, I think some of the members of the city council also expressed their own personal feelings about this, and I was able to convey those thoughts to the department. And after some discussion, we have received a response back from the department regarding our concerns, and in short, I think it addresses all of the concerns we raised. The department makes it very clear that the facilitation is not directed to altering or changing the GSP in any way, that it's in fact not directed to resolving any technical issues regarding the basin, including the technical decisions and analysis that was reached in the GSP, and furthermore, that it is not intended or directed to address any of the pending litigation. And so with those assurances in mind, it's my recommendation now, and I guess for purposes of discussion for the city council, it's my recommendation that the city go ahead and participate in the facilitation, and it would probably be helpful if the city council directs one of the members of the city council to sort of be a spokesman for the city in that process. Any questions?
No, Keith. Thank you for your efforts to convey our concerns, especially regarding the adjudication, and as I understand, the letter will be public record at some point here for anybody who's interested in, but it's great to hear that we've gotten the support from the DWR, and thank you to the DWR for communicating with us in such good faith to our concerns, and we appreciate their work on our behalf to reach a sustainable groundwater plan, which we believe we have, and as we have demonstrated, has been approved, so. Mr. Hayman, I'm gonna turn it over to you to recap from the meeting and any other discussion items, and then we'll bring it back to council discussion.
So before I do that, did anyone else have any other comments that they wanted to make in regards to the response from DWP?
DWR.
DWR, or DWR, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's hard to keep them all straight. Yeah. I always have comments, and I know you guys...
No, no, it's just DWR.
No, I wanted to echo what the mayor said. There was a little bit of, for those of you who weren't at that first kickoff meeting, I can't speak for the rest of council members, but I had some concerns on how the proceedings were gonna go, but the, but DWR responded, Paul Gosden responded well. We had some conversations, the, all the concerns were met and understood, and it seems like things, it seems like we're seeing eye to eye now, and so I appreciated the feedback they gave in the letter, and I look forward to the process, and of course, you know, Scott, you're the logical choice to represent us, but I know that's up for discussion here.
We can close that discussion real quick if we need to, 'cause I think Scott would be the best representative as well.
Yeah, I agree.
It appears you've been voluntold.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how, how does it feel to always have to step front and tickle the arrows, Scott?
I graciously accept that position, so.
Solomon, did you have any comments?
I'm glad to know that we have resolved the issues with DWR, and then we are going to participate in the facilitation, and we are all, I hope we all work together to resolve these things, water problem.
Very good. So like fellow council members have stated, you know, I had my concerns with the, with the facilitation process, and so I wanna thank DWR and Paul Gosden for a prompt response back. In review of this letter, I think they have more than sufficiently answered these concerns, and I feel very comfortable and confident for the city to participate in that facilitation process. And so with that, and it's not, DWR, you know, in the letter, which like the mayor said would be public record, but you know, they have supported us, and you know, here recently in May, we received a $7.6 million grant for one of our primary projects with the GA, and that's the purchase of imported water. And so we graciously appreciate that, and, but we do thank DWR for their response and helping us to understand the facilitation process a little more thoroughly and be a willing partner in that, in that process. So, back to the GA meeting. We did have our meeting last week. It was a fairly short meeting. The, I'm just gonna go over some of the agenda items. We discussed, one of the agenda items that was pertaining to Wolf Hansen and proceeding with negotiations on bonding, purchase of the imported water. So we're moving forward on that, that's good news. We also discussed the audit, the company that does the audits for us, Brown Armstrong. We agreed to move forward with them doing our audit for the year 2021, I believe, is the next, next year. So, we also discussed the well, let me read it here. So item number 11 was Resolution 05-22 requiring new well permit application approval through the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater per Executive Order Number 7, 07-22. In March of, March of this year, Governor Newsom brought forth an executive order pertaining to new well drilling, and so this, the wells that will, new wells that will be drilled will be scheduled through the county process, so just as they have in the past, but they will then come before the GA with the, and get a, I guess you could say a rubber stamp approval from the GA saying that they will not create any burden on other wells or create subsidence. There was discussion in that, as to what wells that pertain to, and it was my understanding that is the commercial wells and does not affect the smaller wells or de minimis wells. And so we agreed to pass that and move forward with it. Item number 12 was DWR-approved groundwater sustainability plan implementation update, and that was by Stetson Engineer, excuse me, Stetson Engineers, our Water Resource Manager, and so he just kinda went over the plans and projects and the, some of the highlights of where we stand with the GSP, and some of that we've already discussed in the past, and some of it is actually in this letter, which we're looking at today. And that pretty much wrapped up the GA meeting. So if anyone has any questions pertaining to the meeting, go ahead and ask away.
Scott, I'm sorry, did you mention the water purchase?
No, I did not mention that. So would you like to, would you like to comment on that, Keith?
Sure. I was able, I think probably the most significant thing that happened at the meeting was I was able to report out of closed session that the GA had reached an agreement as to price regarding the purchase of Table A State Project Water. It's about 700, I think it's 750 acre feet of it, which is, I think, roughly about a third of what we project the water districts need to be. We don't have a final deal. We've got a term sheet, we're waiting to get it initialed back from the seller, but our expectation is that we will have a final purchase agreement on for consideration at the August meeting. So this represents a very significant step forward in achieving our goals to import water, and I guess I would point out that the letter we just got from the DWR also pledges their support in helping us identify other sources of imported water to bring in too. So it's kind of a double win for us, and from my perspective, we got that going. A lot of people said it couldn't be done, and we've also, it appears now that we'll also be working hopefully closely with the department to find additional water.
Thank you, and yes, that is a really huge, a huge win for the GA, and so, and back to the Wolf Hansen, they're, they're going to report back to us in the August meeting and give us an update on the, on the bonds and where we sit on the financing for that water. So it's all coming together, or we hope, you know, continues to come together here in pretty short notice, so.
Scott, can I add a little more color commentary?
Yes.
If you mind, since I'm here. It's probably worth pointing out, on the issue regarding the executive order and approval for new wells, I have found out that at some point following the water district meeting and before the GA meeting, I guess in social media, rumors circulated around that the resolution being considered by the GA meant that the GA would have the authority to deny the water district the ability to put in new wells, and that somehow this was a power grab by the GA to control water, something like that. And I didn't really understand that that rumor had circulated around before the meeting, but I was able to address the question and the concern, and I just wanna make it clear that the governor's executive order does not apply to public water systems. So there is no, the governor's executive order does not grant any new or special power to deny the water district or any other public water system the ability to put in new wells needed for providing water to the public. And I would just, since I'm on my soapbox for a second, I also wanna say that there is no interest on the part of the GA in doing that anyway. You know, it's, you know, as you know, the GA's mission is, I mean, the GA adopted a GSP specifically so that, so that we would not have to tell people to not put in wells. You know, the whole purpose of this is to bring in new water so that the city and the area can continue to grow and develop. So, you know, if anything, you would say that the districts, the GA is working hard to make sure that the district can put in all of the wells it needs to supply water to the public. That's our mission.
Thank you, Keith. Any other questions from?
I said a member of the public asked a question, the entity selling the water. Do we have that, is that public record? Do you recall?
Yeah, it was actually identified on our agenda. It's Jackson Ranch is the name of the entity.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, is there any other council discussion?
None.
Ronald Porter, there we go. My, the minor only real problem with it, I don't understand the rest of it, but the executive order by the governor carries no weight. He doesn't have the authority under the Constitution nor the law, and that's something you better watch very carefully because it won't hold up in anywhere in the land. An executive does not have the authority to write a law, and with this order, that's exactly what he's doing. He may even be making directives to someone to write a rule, but even the rule-making authority is a law which is unconstitutional. If we wanna run a country, if we wanna keep what we have, our liberties and freedom, we have to go back to running a government that operates constitutionally, and he doesn't have that authority, and it's very dangerous, because if he did, he could... And it's very dangerous because if he did, he could change it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Not on the floor. I'm guessing there's public comment on the phone. Caller, state your name. Caller, go ahead and state your name.
Saul Ayone.
I'm sorry, sir, could you speak up just a little bit? I didn't hear your name, sir.
Saul Ayone.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, is this the mayor?
You're speaking at City Council.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Saul Ayone. I'm 1015 Kedalup. I'm out of the great city of McFarland. I just wanted to, I just wanted to start off by saying what an amazing job your staff is doing presenting items for your meetings. I'm very impressed with the, your city manager, Ron Strand, and his staff, how transparent and proactive they are for your community. And yes, I, I, I view all your meetings. The reason is to observe and learn how a successful city operates and delivers its services for its, its citizens. And in addition to that, your budget workshop presentation was excellent, very, very chance, yes.
Sir, I apologize for interrupting you. We're right now specifically on discussion regarding the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be happy to, to, to let you in during public comment. I just want to make sure I keep it focused on the current discussion topic.
Well, Mayor, I thought, I thought we're on public comment.
I apologize. No, we are in discussion on the Indian Wells Groundwater Authority. We had to move an item up on the agenda. If I'm, I'm going to go and ask our IT staff to go and place you back on hold, but we will absolutely give you a chance again to address this in public comment, okay, sir?
No problem.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any other public comment on the groundwater authority?
Man, someone called in to be positive and you interrupted him, Mr. Mayor.
It is my duty in this role to, to keep the meeting organized on the topics on which we are discussing.
I'm just being lighthearted. Thank you for.
And I appreciate it.
Thank you for doing a good job. I'm just being lighthearted.
I just didn't want to see his time all used up. So if, is there any other public comment regarding the water groundwater authority? Seeing none, I believe direction's been given. You've been voluntold. And I look forward to seeing how the facilitation works. We're, we're, again, thank you to the DWR and to our legal counsel for working to communicate our concerns and, and to a positive resolution. We appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, folks.
Okay. Next item is going to be our public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council may, I gotta get my right script here because I almost had it off the top of my head and then I didn't quite have it right. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, council, city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes and the public comment section is limited to one hour. Because the gentleman was so gracious to speak, I am going to go to the phones first rather than the floor. Do I have any callers on the phone for open public comment? Sir, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Well, let me start over again. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Saul Ayone. I'm a council member out of this great city of McFarland. I want to start off by saying what an amazing job your staff does from your city clerk, presenting all the items for your meetings. I'm impressed with your city manager, Ron Strand. I had the opportunity to meet him a couple of times. He, how his staff is very transparent and proactive for your community. And yes, I do watch all your, I view all your meetings. The reason is, like I said before, is to learn and observe how a success city operates and delivers its services for its, its citizens and residents. In addition, that budget workshop you guys presented a couple months ago was excellent, transparent and very easy to follow. My, my thing is, I know, I want to circle back when you do the sales tax, I obviously can't talk about it until we get to that item six, because I want to follow the rules. But I, I want to express how important that is when we get there. But I just want to, I just want to applaud, compliment your city council, how cohesive, transparent you guys are. Mayor, keep on leading the way. It's, it's, it's great. I have a great time watching your, your, your guys' meeting. Some, once, once I got started with this two years ago, nobody gives you a book that and say, hey, how to be a good councilman, so you got to learn and adapt. And somebody told me one time, hey, it's such a thankless job, but when you're doing what's best for your community, it pays itself off. And one last thing I would like to add is, can you guys kind of leave Travis alone? He's a, he's a shining star. But that, thank you again for your services.
So we, we're all going to want to know how much he paid you for that one. Thank you, sir. And since you're throwing a shout our way, I'm going to go ahead and throw a shout to Victorville Mayor Deborah Jones, who I got a chance to meet. And I also observe other councils to get perspective and, and I know how important that is. So thank you for those nice words. I appreciate it. Is there any other public comment on the phones? Caller, state your name.
Hello?
Hello? Caller, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Mike Neal. I'll consent to give in my name since I'm not there in person, although California law does not require it or public knowledge. I'd like to make comment about the actions on the past council meeting and the imposition of mandatory trash service on every single household in the city of Ridgecrest. One thing that was not brought forward, not, let's think even mentioned, was the, the simple fact that the city gets franchise fees from waste management. And apparently, past years, they've gotten franchise fees which are 10% of gross receipts, not, not their product, but their gross. And so they've got a total of about two, almost $300,000 per year from waste management and franchise fee. So that means that if things are, fees are going up 32%, that you're going to rake in another $93,000 a year from the waste management franchise fee. Nobody ever mentioned that in the meeting. I think citizens should, should be aware that as, as they pay, the city profits. So it appears that in this case, the imposition of functional fascism on the city of Ridgecrest pays, at least for the city. And like I said before, the 800 to 1,000 people are now being targeted and it appears they've already been targeted pretty actively as far as the actions of waste management themselves to force them to take the trash service. Thank you. I hope that you're going to find, as you did in the past, that there's going to be a lot of really nice, active resistance to forcing them to do business with a private business, recognizing that that's a very un-American type of action on the part of the city. So I look forward to seeing the efforts on those people's parts. One other thing I'd just like to bring forward, and I can't figure your clock, I don't know how much time I've got left.
Two minutes, two minutes and 45 seconds.
Okay, I've got plenty of time then. Have you ever heard anything called a smart truck? It seems like everything these days is some kind of smart alec, something or other. They brag on their website about having smart truck technology. What that means is they actually have cameras that are mounted on the collection trucks that take pictures of the trash. So they're taking pictures of your trash when they pick it up. And if they see stuff that isn't supposed to be in a particular bin, it says that customers are going to be directly notified of any quote unquote issues. So I guess they're going to come, give you a verbal spanking if they see organic waste in your recycle bin or in your trash bin or vice versa. You got, you got, you got nine choices there, three out of three things. So maybe they'll come, come after you and give you, you know, a verbal spanking. It, it does say in that same paragraph on that thing on the website that when they encounter contamination in these customers' bins, they will quote unquote encourage behavioral change, whatever that means, through cart tags, photos and other outreach methods. One certainly has to wonder, after what we've seen, what kind of quote unquote outreach methods the city might be wanting to try to use to force the citizens to subscribe to a business contract that they don't want to subscribe to. So it'll be interesting. Unfortunately, I don't think any of this is going to speak well for.
One minute, sir.
Representation by the council on the citizens. So we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any other public comment on the phones? Seeing none, do I have any public comment on the floor?
Good evening, Council. Tom Wicknick here. I'm glad the one gentleman that called in, he, he gave me a nice opportunity to continue on the subject of transparency. And I have a question about, and first of all, I want to condemn, commend this city for the Facebook, City of Ridgecrest Facebook site and putting out information. I think it's doing a good job. But I do have a question about that site. I would like to know, when, when the city is actually posting on there, who has authority to actually do the posting on there? Who all can go in there and just post without any kind of approval or? I, I, I would assume normally somebody would approve something before it got posted up there because when it goes under City of Ridgecrest, we, the public has no idea who is saying what they're saying. So can I be told who, how do we know that?
Yes, there are a, a group of people, including myself, a couple of analysts, as well as a consultant that will post content. We try to make sure that all that content is factual, not opinionated. So the information that, that comes out does not have a, a spin to it, so to speak. There are times that if I post, I may put my name specifically identifying that I commented because of the specific nature of, of whatever the response is. Do we have council people that post on the city website? No. It's primarily staff. I should say it's exclusively staff.
Okay, very good. That's good information. The reason I brought it up was because at the last meeting, I, I had made a comment about the fire station. And somebody went on there under the City of Ridgecrest and said, kind of alluded it. I think somebody asked then again, well, what about what I said? And the answer they got back was, well, we have no record of that, or there's no paperwork about that. And that's why I was wondering, who said that there's no paperwork about the fire station?
That was me.
That was you?
That was me. We looked, there are no, there are no documents concerning the city paying for Station 77 on Dolphin. We looked at that as part of our negotiation process with Kern County. And in fact, the, the property shows that it is that, belonging to that of Kern County. So there are no records. I've been here since 86. I, I know of no, now it may have happened before I got here. It may have happened when you were on city council. I'm not sure. But our records that we have indicate that we have nothing that shows that we paid for that fire station out of RDA funds.
Well, then the records are missing something because like you said, I was on the council. And when we started that RDA, part of the negotiation was specific to get permission to start the RDA, to get that incremental increase in property tax revenue. We had to agree to certain things. And one of those was that, as well as Gateway Elementary School.
If you do recall, that the city was sued by the county. And there was a, there was a settlement that happened and within that settlement mentions nothing of the Kern County Fire Department. So that's, that's all the records that I know. I've, I've looked at them extensively over the last five years. Don't want to argue with you. I'm just saying from, from what we see from the research we've done on the redevelopment agency, the successor agency, all that's important about how we got to where we're at.
Yes, it is.
Is, is also in part of our negotiations with the fire department and Kern County. And from my recollection, from what I've been able to find, there are no documentation of that. I'm not saying that you're, that you may have a better recollection because you were there at the time, but a review of all the litigation paperwork mentions nothing about a fire department.
I find it very interesting that there's nothing in the paperwork that talks about that. Because we were, and we were held over the box on that one. I mean, it was just, you're not going to get our approval. We're not going to authorize it. The county supervisors said, we are not going to authorize that without that part of the agreement. And Sierra Sands came in with the same thing about Gateway School. And so that's why I'm really interested. I don't have my records from back in those days. Now, that's a long time ago. But anyway, I would, I, I think the only way you can, might know is look at the projects that were built with the RDA initially, right from, of course, this building was one of those projects that was built. But what fund, where the funding went in the original project? I think that's about the only place I could try and look for it, but.
Yeah, we looked, we re-researched it when they, they closed the jail. We spent a lot of time scouring these documents. And like I said, if I, if I saw it in there, I would say so. But from my recollection, from going through all those documents, there was no notation of that.
Okay. And my final question would be, you just mentioned the jail. Are we still paying $250,000 a year for jail services?
No, the jail's closed.
I know that. So we stopped paying the 250K?
Well, that 250, yeah. It stopped being paid when the redevelopment agency dissolved. And now we're on the successor agency, the wind down of it.
Okay, so that's not, nothing we're paying for anymore?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment from the floor?
Hi, I'm Olaf Dowd. I'm an archaeologist and rock art artist. I'm usually a calm, quiet guy, but today I'm really disappointed in the turnout to honor this guy who has done so much for Ridgecrest and the people of Ridgecrest, including me. And I have a contract with your son, Mr. Blades, about getting extra time at the end, right? Have you forgotten already?
I guess I forgot.
Is he still here? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
You're talking about the, the mayor?
The, the young man?
Yeah. Maverick, is that true? Yeah. He said, he says yes.
Okay. But I was expecting to be number 20th in line here. So that's why I was negotiating some extra time?
Makes sense.
This way? I'm not used to this. But I only had a couple little, little bits of information because I expected to be at the end of the, end of the line.
Makes sense.
I've worked with Doug for at least 10 years. Most of our focus has been on petroglyphs, as you probably all know. And back a few years ago, we were really rolling in the direction of making Ridgecrest the petroglyph capital of the world, or at least the northern hemisphere. And we lost some, some backing, we lost some funding. And then the city lost a key member of their staff who was backing us really, really heavily. So you can just look around and see all the, the petroglyphs, the park, the medians, the work on the stoplights. Boy, that caught my eye. Buildings painted, we were really, really ready to charge ahead, but. So we lost the funding and the median art stopped and everything else stopped with that. But I, I worked with Doug on the, on Petroglyph Park, although he was employed by the city. He was consulting with me. They can't cut your pay anymore, can they? So I think the two of us did a really excellent job on, on the park. And I was working for the county and I saw Doug was working for the city. And the one other last item occurred as we were putting in, I think the second median on this long strip. And of course, for some reason, all this rock artwork has to be done in the summer. And of course, for some reason, all this rock artwork has to be done in the summer. So Doug's sitting in his air-cooled truck, sipping on a cold coffee or something, and I'm sitting next to him with a bottle of water. And they're pouring cement on one of the medians and he says, I don't think they're doing it right. Why don't you go check it? I've, I've had a lot of experience in cement pouring. But anyway, I, I went up and did his bidding. And it seemed to be getting hotter. And sure enough, one of the other engineers said, you better go get cooled down. You're really looking bad. So I went home and cooled down and came back to do some more work. And then my left leg wouldn't function properly. And Doug says, you better go to the ER. So I went to the ER and rehydrated. They wouldn't let me leave until I urinated. So those are my two best recollections of, of Doug. And I appreciate all he's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah. Okay?
Yeah. I was, I said, thank you, sir. We were saying thank you. Is there any other public comment from the floor?
Ronald Porter. I'm here to speak even though you already passed it on the, on the refuse collection. Our country is a republic, not a democracy. It's a republic for a reason. Because each and every one of you are in a lower state, and that's actually where the founders intended it. Your primary duty is to protect the liberty and freedom of every man, woman, child. And for the government to decide that they can mandate that a man has to pay someone for a service he can provide for himself is against every basic understanding of liberty and freedom that we knew in this country. I understand refuse recollection, but even reading the state that I can find so far, there's no reason that in the ordinance or where the city, that two people can't share it if there's, there's one person in each house. They don't need all that service. I do so much recycling and mulching that I'm going to be paying $100 a trash can in a year. I refuse. Absolutely refuse. And I want to find the criminal code you're going to charge someone under. You have to start considering the individual. And then, okay, they can mandate I have trash service. Can they mandate I pay someone to come cook my dinner? Are you going to be my total mommy and daddy? I understand we have an environment to protect. I've done more to protect the environment in my life than most people. But we also have the greatest and most important thing to protect is every individual's rights. Even, even the waste management service, when we had our last one, we had, I got rid of the mandatory, they didn't push it. The reason they didn't push it, because they couldn't. The reason they did it, not wasn't because of city council, because the citizens got together and said, no, we're not going to have it. And that's where our city council's primary job is, to stand up and say, hey, this is too much. You're, you're designed in our, in our government to be our first line of defense. If you don't create and do that defense, then you're not doing your job. I'm not against trash service, someone wants it, but no one should have to have it. I'm not, what if you have two neighbors, one each? There's one person lives in, why can't they share it? According to the law that I see, there's no reason they can't. Granted, we don't want to get trash turned around. I mean, the funniest one ever happened was up there in, in the woods, and I filled the back of my truck all the way up. And the guy, the guy says, well, we, we don't want people coming in here because of trash. And I says, you see that back of my truck? It's full. None of it's mine. We all have an obligation for our environment. And we have to start saying, we're going to take that obligation serious, but we're not going to take away people's liberty and freedom to do so. The primary thing here is methane gas. I can guarantee you without question in my mind, methane gas doesn't hurt one thing, period. Go do the research. It all, it all breaks down. Methane gas is one of the most common things in this country. Every time a leaf falls off a tree, every time a tree falls down, it all creates methane It's, it's part of the, the system and the process. Carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide is normal. It's less than 1%. It's actually point, uh, four parts per million of our atmosphere. It has nothing to do with climate change either. In fact, if we reduce it, they want to get rid of carbon dioxide. You realize if we get anywhere below, below three and a half, our crops suffer greatly? You realize if they double it, then our crops grow better, they need less water? The top physicists in the country said, hey, it's not a linear curve. Where we're at right now, if it's going along like this, even to get up three times, he says, it would only climb a very small amount. Carbon dioxide is a good thing. We're all carbon units. Quit listening to the propaganda and go, look, car, carbon dioxide in this country's been much higher. But it goes down to the same thing. You have to look, it's, what, are we protecting the people? And we have to look at that. This, we need to do something about this mandatory trash. If you can find a way to do it, and I'm certain that the, the board will work with you. In fact, if you'd like, I'll call the board. Just tell me what your concerns are. I'm not afraid of them. They're just another government agency that works for us. They're supposed to listen to you and all your concerns. They're not supposed to dictate to you. We don't live in a tyrannical government. Although, if I ask some of the people in Washington DC and some of our state capitals, not picking on any party, they would disagree with me. But we need to look at that very strongly and say, hey, it's enough. What about people that are on limited income? What are they going to do? You're going to take $500 a year from their, from their pocketbook? It's elder abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, I understand there is one public comment on the phones again? Or there is not? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move on with council announcements. Are there any council announcements?
I have none.
Nope. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council before action is taken. There is one item, which is the proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated June 15, 2022, and July 6, 2022. Do I have, does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
No.
Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have approval of the, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion and second? Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we are now into our regular agenda items. We have already moved past item number three. We are on item number four, which is the discussion and proposed action to approve a resolution designated a voting member and alternate to attend the League of California Cities Annual Conference and represent the City of Ridgecrest. Ms. Sharlon?
Yes. We currently have Mr. Blades that sits as our representative for the league, and his alternate is mayor on the committee list. That doesn't mean that you have to be the one that goes. I'm just letting you know who's on the committees. The league is where they vote on resolutions that are put forth before the entire league. And we have to have a primary and an alternate. It is September 7th through the 9th in Long Beach. Kyle is registered, but we do have to have an alternate on the resolution in case for some reason Kyle can't be there. You would need to attend. It is in person this year, whoever the alternate is.
Okay. I'm, I know I am going to be unable to attend. So if there's another council member that's intending to attend.
What's the date again?
September 7th through the 9th.
So I don't, I don't think it's absolutely required that we have a alternate. It's just, it, it gets us in a situation where if something crazy comes up and I can't go.
You can't go.
Then there has to be an alternate. However, we have to have decided tonight and have them booked on the roster.
Right.
For some, you know, just in case something comes up.
An alternate just needs to be listed on the resolution on the date.
Okay. Correct. I mean, I'm more than happy to remain the alternate. I just know that I, I'm just declaring, I know I will not be able to attend.
If, if you're sure you can't, it's better that maybe.
We pick somebody else.
Yeah, exactly.
One of the other two step up in the ability.
So while, so while these other two are thinking about it, does anybody have any questions about what the League of California Cities does and what the purpose of? So the purpose of League of California Cities, it's like, it's not like it's a lobbyist group for, cities all across the state of California pay a, pay a yearly fee into the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities will then champion certain causes always to, their primary goal is to retain local control over issues. And so then we get together and meet and, well, Chip, you did this for a very long time, right? You were actually actively involved with the organization for, for a long, very long time. I am not as involved as Chip. But they, they take on all kinds of issues. Each league is broken up into different divisions. The league is broken up into different divisions. We're in a desert mountain division. We meet periodically and we will discuss issues that are facing our region. And sometimes those, those issues can range, often they're big ones that we'll face, you know, Victorville, Asburya, Bishop Mammoth. Right now, there's, there's an issue facing us to do with Joshua trees and construction. All that to say is that it is an important group to be a part of. They, they're rather large. They do have a voice in Sacramento. The things they champion usually gets a pretty good amount of attention. And so we try to be a part of that. I attend every, every meeting since I've been on the council.
I'll be an alternate, but you, make sure you go.
Okay, yeah.
I will also say that I can register you for one day, and the day that they're voting is Thursday. So if in the event that he decides not to go, it could just be a one-day attendance for you. I realize it's in Sacramento, but I can just have you go for one day if need be.
It's in Long Beach.
Oh, Long Beach. Thank you for the correction.
It's usually in Sacramento.
Yeah. And also, an added benefit is you can also get your ethics training and everything out of the way by attending the council, the, the league meeting. You won't have me after you for all the rest of your training if you do attend too. So that's an added benefit.
So Solomon is going to, Solomon's going to be a reluctant alternate?
He's the reluctant alternate.
All right.
Okay.
Don't worry, I'll be there, Solomon.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other council discussion? Is there any public discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with Congressman Rajaratnam as the alternate.
Yes, we do.
And Ms. Blades as the primary.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Well, you know, real quick, I just want to say that usually before these meetings, we get these packets on like an issue that's going to be championed. And when that comes out, when we get it all.
I will put it on the agenda.
I will discuss it.
So we can discuss it. Yes, sir.
I just was looking at you so I didn't say something wrong.
Looking at you, kid.
I get nervous when you look over here. Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, we do need a motion on that and to approve the resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, or I, I move that we approve.
That's the primary. Mr. Blades is the primary.
And Rajaratnam is the alternate.
Rajaratnam is the alternate.
Yes, sir.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we are on to item number five. Consideration of Resolutions Related to the Calling of Ridgecrest General Municipal Election to Be Held on November 8, 2022.
Martin, you're talking and we can't hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Honorable members, can everybody hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
Okay. I see a slide presentation on the screen. Somebody's going to start with that?
Yeah, Martin, if you want to start out for what the, the resolutions are for specifically for the general election as well.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, if you can start out by discussing the purpose of the resolution, then Sri and I are going to, going to have a short presentation on the proposed tax measure.
Thank you. Every two years, city council has the responsibility and the duty to call for a municipal election. During that election, generally, mayor seat as well as two of the council member seats are in place, are, are up for election. I apologize for the background noise. Some things can be helped. What's before you today are two resolutions. These are a little bit different than usual two years because in addition to having the two open seats and the mayor, mayor, mayor seat, consistent with council's direction from the last meeting, this resolution would also place a ballot measure on the ballot for the November 8, 2022 election, which if approved, would add 1% revenue of, 1% use sales tax to the general fund revenues. The first resolution is to call for the election. The second resolution is to consolidate the election and request the county to basically consolidate and provide all related services related to the election. With that, I'll answer any questions or hand it over to Ron for a presentation. The next item that's on the agenda, item six, also obviously relates to this, and that is the ordinance, which you will be voting on today, assuming that we have an affirmative vote on these two resolutions, which would amend the municipal code in anticipation of a successful election and would become effective if the voters vote the measure in.
Okay, first of all, we would like to start out by thanking all of the residents that participated in the survey over the last 18 months. We had over 1,000 participation, or 1,000 residents participate. And through these surveys, we were able to gain their input on local service needs and priorities.
I'm trying. Got it, there we go.
So we have updated the list of priorities to include the feedback that we received during the most recent survey. So the community priorities are keeping both Ridgecrest fire stations open full-time, replacing Penny Pool, continuing to fix potholes on neighborhood streets, and city street repair, maintaining 911 emergency response times, and maintaining recreation programs for all ages.
And as you recall, July 6, two weeks ago, staff made a presentation to council regarding the challenges that the city has in meeting vital services and the need for additional revenue. Just to recap on some of the, the key items was obviously the fire contract, which has a $1.2 million increase over the next six years. The replacement of Penny Pool, as we discussed before, we can rebuild Penny Pool with, within nine years. So we can rebuild it with the funding that could be considered based upon this proposal. Public safety personnel, as you know, we eliminated four officer positions. You know, we'd like to eventually bring those back. Recruitment and retention, additional road maintenance and addressed deferred maintenance, improve quality life within the community to support NOS China Lake, and then recruit and retain businesses in the community. And then lastly, to take advantage of the $4 billion earthquake rebuild of NOS China So at the conclusion of our last meeting, council directed staff to come back and, and bring a local control sales tax measure for November 8 back to council for consideration. Now, that sales tax measure would be, our recommendation would be a one-cent sales tax that expires in nine years. It would raise an estimated 5.9 million per year. Of note, the sales tax would be paid by the city and county residents and visitors. Would not be a property tax and only be paid, that's currently being paid only by city residents and businesses. Local funds could not be taken by the county or state. They would be controlled by the city. would be controlled by the city. Um, it would include, uh, physical safeguards, including annual audits with an independent oversight committee. And then, uh, with a, a nine-year sunset clause, uh, then at the end of nine years, if the citizens of Ridgecrest feel that we have not spent that money appropriately, they could just not renew it. And with this, we've come up with, uh, the ballot question that if council approves would be brought to the voters on November 8th. Um, obviously, we had a 75-word limit and this would be, what would be a, uh, yes or no response to the community. And with that, I have, uh, I can entertain any questions you may have.
I'm just reading it. I'm giving everyone an opportunity to read it. Even those people out there, the opportunity to read it. Okay. So obviously, we know where there's gonna be several discussion items here. Um, this is going to be discussion, um, for the consideration of the resolution. Now, um, just to clarify, uh, Martin, we're going to approve the ordinance after this discussion, correct? If, if, if this was approved, then we'll bring the ordinance. Okay.
That is correct. That's why the ordinance is the next one.
So any discussion on the ordinance is not to decide. Okay. Um, it's been a long journey getting here. Um, I, I would stress that to everyone who's out there listening. The communication efforts that we started two years ago or 18 months ago were focused on making sure that when we came before this community, that we were coming with facts, not with opinions, not with our, our guts, not with just what we think is right, but rather what the citizens have told us. And I think that's the important takeaway as we begin this discussion is to remember that these are the priorities that our citizens have identified for us. This is what they've identified is important to them. And it was their identification specifically in replacing Penny Pool that made sure that things like this are mentioned in here. These are important things to this community. Um, I obviously stand in support, as I have said many, many times, um, but I would encourage any council comments, or would you like to just get public comment first?
I have a great deal of comments, not so much questions. I watched the last meeting so I could, I went through the presentation.
We're expecting twice as much out of you this, this time.
I know, I know. High, high expectations. The bar, the bar is always high. I will wait for public comment and then I have more than a few things to say.
Okay. Are you guys okay with taking public comment first?
That's good.
Okay. So we're gonna go and begin with public comment. Um, we will begin with public comment from the floor and then we will go to phones. If there is anybody who would like to comment, we would welcome your opinion.
Tom Wicknick. Okay, uh, looking at what's up there on the wall. Uh, so, let's see. Such services as fire services, keeping both stations open, 9/11 response times, replacing Penny Pool. Let me stop there. Does the initiative obligate the city to build Penny Pool legally? Legally?
Since you said legally, I'm letting the attorney answer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as I stated at the last meeting, um, the use of any revenue that will be added to the general fund will be to the discretion of the city council. That money, if the ballot passes, will be general fund revenue and can be spent on any legally approved general fund expenditure, including the pool.
Okay, very good. And oh, by the way, Mr. Attorney, I understand the dogs, what they're saying behind you. I'm just kidding. Lighten up. Okay. Uh, so if the next council decided to, uh, not build the pool and let's say, let's build a community golf course, we could do that if, if they wanted to, right?
So Tom, can I say something?
Sure.
If you mind.
Well, I'm asking a question. Is that a true statement though? Could, could the council change the direction?
Well, it, it is possible, but you having been on council, I'm sure, Tom, and, cause somebody else asked me the same question. It's the only reason I'm piping up. Uh, that is that the, the council can, I mean, they can do a lot of things.
Mm-hmm.
A whole lot of things.
Right.
I mean, I, I think it, I think even under the law, Measure V, I mean, there's, there's ways that a lot of the money get pulled from one account to the next. I cannot imagine a world where, I'm not even talking about this council, but a city council promises the community to do something as important as Penny the Pool, Penny Pool, this, I cannot imagine a world where a, a council obligates those funds, starts construction, and then says at the last minute, we're not gonna support it, we're not gonna continue that. And so if you're asking the question legally, yeah, as I understand it legally, yeah, a council could completely reverse course and put in something like a golf course, which I think would be equal, um, political suicide because of the water situation, right? I think you're asking to get tomatoes thrown at you or worse.
I'm not advocating for that.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. I'm just saying.
Mayor, may I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, man.
Thank you. I, I just wanna be clear, and I, I apologize for interrupting, uh, but I wanna be clear that, that, again, the, the expenditure on a pool or any other item on the list that is on the ballot is simply identification. It is not a direction or a course or a promise. It is simply an identification of things that general fund expenditures could be spent on, subject to discretion of the city council.
Okay.
So there would not be a reversal of a direction because the, the, the direction at this point in time is to put the ballot on the measure, uh, the, the measure on the ballot, sorry. And, and with the understanding that this is a general fund revenue source that can be spent on any general fund expenditure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I'll, I'll close with, uh, I didn't see it myself, but I had somebody, uh, send me a, a message that, uh, somebody with, at City Hall is, was guaranteeing that the ground would break.
Do you wanna say the ironclad that I said on the Facebook post? Go ahead, Tom. Let me be.
No, I didn't know if you.
I'm the one that said Denise Gorman asked me, would it be ironclad? And I'm gonna stand by my words, which were exactly what I was trying to say. Obviously, it's a general fund measure that I cannot make any such commitments, nor was I attempting to. But I was attempting to convey to a citizen that it is the words that I have said for two years straight, that I am dedicated to seeing a community pool return to our citizens. And if that means that I have to use the words ironclad as a way of me conveying that my commitment is there, then I have no problem with standing up and owning my words. That it's my commitment to see that this council continues. Now, come November, I may not be in this seat, so I may not have any more say in it. And that's exactly what we're saying. So I'm more than happy to, to, to address the ironclad words. I'm the one that said it.
Actually, I didn't know about the ironclad word. So you brought it up, fine with me. Uh, but okay, so, uh, it, it has been guaranteed then that this is gonna be break ground within the first two years.
As, as I stated in my words is that I think we will have failed our promises to our citizens if we do not do that. Now, does that mean it's a guarantee? Absolutely not. It means that I believe my word is very valuable and I believe I wanna stand behind it. That's why I'm sitting up here on this roll. And I'm gonna, well, to say that if I'm in that role and this passes and we're able to move forward, then I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure that that happens within the first, um, as quickly as humanly possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Ronald Porter, I object to any new taxes. We're taxed far enough to, in this, in the state right now. I, I mean, I like government, but the first thing government needs to do is look where they can tighten the belt before they come wanting more of my belt. The biggest problem we have in this city and local governments is we refuse to look at the constitution of the Cali, state of California. In the last two years, I've seen, without looking hard, I've seen at least a half a dozen different things that the state of California directed this, takes the city to do, which are unfunded mandates. And the reason that these, these unfunded mandates are very, very important is the states went so far that they wrote it into the constitution many years ago in California. But they created their own board, which Ron, I'm sure knows best, this one, that basically it's an, it's an, it's a, an executive branch deciding whether or not you can make an argument about it. It's a complete denial of due process for everyone, the citizens and the cities. And attorneys, when you talk about, that's the, what the story they give you. They need to take it to a different place and just take it directly to court. You don't have to go through their thing. They wrote a law that says in order for you to do this, you have to do it. But the constitution doesn't say that. You have a right to take it directly to court and ignore them. We keep losing money and we need to, to look, says, how do we get around this? How do we, California has done something in recent years and I've watched it. Every time they want money, their favorite method to do it is to make all you guys look bad. Well, we're gonna make the local guys go get theirs. And they've been doing it for years. They did it to our jail. They did just recently something to do with discrimination, and I don't remember what it was a couple of years ago. But they keep digging in our pocket because you're easy. I said earlier, you have to start fighting. Mr. Bruin, I am gonna say something because you brought up the swimming pool. I'm not against the swimming pool, a lot of other things, but the swimming pool isn't one of them because I think everyone needs to swim. But I am against one thing. They've refused to do it for years. If they have a design, all I want is the specs on what they want for a swimming pool, how big? And what they're gonna want. I want those specs before they even consider it. I used to do, I used to do purchasing for the government. I guarantee I can save you money whatever bid you get.
Yeah, so obviously, there's no bid, Mr. Porter.
I understand that.
No, no, no. What I was gonna say is I can, I'll be happy to provide you the SPP grant application, which is the, which was the generally accepted vision for what the pool would be in terms of the, the size and.
That would be fine.
And I'll be happy to provide that.
Okay. Um, I just want you to know, cause before I've tried to get this information, I can't get it. And, but we, we have to start saying the state, we had enough. I don't know this is true. This is, I mean, I've lived around here forever. I'm part of the dirt. And the fire department, we keep talking about the fire department, but it's my understanding, and this come from a guy a long time ago, and I don't know this to be true. But the reason that we didn't get as much money for our city as other cities do is because the county agreed to keep fire services here at no cost to the city. I was told up this by a guy a long time ago. Whether it's true or not, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Stranis, suggestion for you on some of the stuff you're looking for? And I understand records get lost. Go to the county and ask for them. If there's an agreement between us and the county, then it has to be there too. And if you don't want them knowing it's you, call me up. I'll send a FOIA over there or public records request. I don't care. We have to take care of us. Um, one of the biggest things, of course, the reason that the, that the fire department's cost us so much, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about now, is because of the federal government. They got rid of fire department shifts. Another reason that, that we do have some control over is one of the reasons that fire department costs so much, and they did it to justify much for the county, the fire chief, is the fire chief, the fire engine runs on every time an ambulance rolls. There's no need for that. None whatsoever. And when it rolls, each one of those guys, if I understand, he's still correct, they get overtime every time that thing rolls out of the house at night. They like it because the guy creates a bigger budget for him, but it doesn't help us. If we're paying a great person, we have a say in that and we should use it. We're the little guys on the block and everyone says, oh, you're the little guy, you can't do nothing. Well, we better learn to do something or we're gonna be completely overrun. I've seen it too many times. They just made some demands, some other thing that came out of the state, that police departments have to do more things. It has to end. We have enough to do without creating paperwork. Anyway, I see my time's about up. Thank you all for listening. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir.
Evening councils. Scott Miller first. Doug, thank you for all of the work you did. Absolutely. Uh, when it comes to this 1% sales tax, one, I think nobody wants any new taxes. Uh, something I understand is if Bakersfield decides they want to raise a tax by 1%, uh, if Bakersfield wants to do it and we don't want it, too bad. We're probably gonna get it anyway because they're a bigger dog of the block than we are. What are you saying with your hand?
It, 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 the county has, has signaled that they're only looking at the unincorporated areas right now.
That's what they've signaled with this one, but in general, the state.
But in general, you're correct.
The statement is true.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, when, when we're speaking, Bakersfield, that we're not talking about city of Bakersfield, we're talking about county of Kern.
County of Kern, correct. It's an umbrella and thank you for that, Kyle, is, yes, the one that they've signaled is into the unincorporated, uh, areas, which would be like the Ransburgs and the, uh, Inyo Kerns, if you will. So going back to the analogy that I was using, the umbrella of, if Bakersfield decides they want to, um, do a tax of 1% and take us to 9.25, my understanding, the 9.25 tax rate is the top of the, if you will, the food chain for our tax for our city.
Unless you're Los Angeles or other urban area in which you petitioned the state to raise it to 11.
But here, we're at 9.25.
That would be correct.
Okay.
By state law is 9.25 unless you've petitioned for special consideration from the state to raise it higher.
Let's not do that. So, so we're at 9.25, or, excuse me, we're not at 9.25.
It's 2% above the base state tax rate. So the base state tax rate is seven and a quarter, and you can add up to 2% in terms of the local municipalities, which would include the county as well.
Got it. So Kern County decided they wanted, wanted to do a 1% tax. They're bigger than we are. If we said no, they said yes, they're gonna win. And that monies would go to Bakersfield slash Kern County, the bigger umbrella, and we would get nothing. If we in fact do a 1% tax before, if you, I'm gonna call it a preventative strike, for lack of a better term. We are a military town, right? Uh, we do a present, a preventative strike and do a tax of 1%. And they see now that we have a, uh, nine-year sundowner clause and an oversight committee by independent citizens. I love that. Uh, I, Mr. Mayor, you and I had a conversation a few weeks ago and I said hard pass. And.
And I said lots of talking still going.
Absolutely, you did. I said hard pass without a sundowner clause and some way to check and balance. So I'm glad to see that on there. So, uh, going back to kind of a bullet point, if they said they wanna do 1% and take us to 9.25, we would now be, if you will, landlocked and not be able to do a thing. And those monies would go down there. So if we do a 1% tax here in town, uh, for Ridgecrest, the monies would stay here. We'd have a local band of citizens looking, watching, making sure what it's being spent on. Yes, that money is just going to the general fund as far as I understand. That would prohibit Kern County, Bakersfield from taking more money away from us. Is, would that be right in a bullet point nutshell?
It's accurate relative to the next two years. Because Measure V would come up in 2024.
Right. Measure V is a sundowner in 2024.
And Measure V has its sundowner at 2024. And if the citizens should, if in 2024, ballot measure should be presented both for the county and for the city for incorporated areas, and the city should not pass, repass, uh, or re, uh.
Re-say okay.
Reauthorize Measure V, shall we say. And the county also had a measure, and that county measure passed and the city measure failed, then the circumstances that you're describing would occur.
And those monies would again, would go to Bakersfield.
Would again go to Bakersfield.
That is, I'm gonna say two years down the road, if you.
That would be, no, that would be the November of '24 general election.
Right. And at that point, if we did have this on, this sales tax would be on the next election, is that correct?
This, uh, measure, this proposal will be on the, uh, November 8th, 2022 ballot.
Okay, so on the, the next one.
Yes.
So that would, again, using our military terms, that would be preventative strike for two years down the road. In, if, uh, Measure V did not pass, Bakersfield could say, hey, why don't you give another 1% and the monies would go down there, but yet we would still have that 1% here. Like I said, I don't want any new taxes. However, if I had to choose, Bakersfield or Ridgecrest, I think my humble opinion, not humble, my opinion on that is I'd rather see that here in Ridgecrest. But I just wanted to make sure that I understood all that correctly and I wanted to make sure that some other people had that same thing, as my phone was blowing up in the back. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other public comment from the floor?
Any other public comment from the floor?
Oh, I was laughing because Denise is back there.
I'm waiting. I was hoping Denise was coming out. We're waiting to see.
Chip Holloway, there's nothing humble about Scott Miller, just for the record. And I too want to thank you for honoring Mr. Luke. Like I said, when you honored Rick a few months ago, the same thing applies to Doug. There's so many things that are not captured in the resolution. Personal things, things that Doug would never even seek credit for or didn't do things to get credit for that he has done, stories that people will tell you, individuals that totally are unrelated to his job. It's just Doug Luke as a human being is an incredible man. So I thank you for honoring him. And he also has promised me if I said something nice with him, he'd stay on the Fairgrounds Board for another 10 years. But I just want to bring up a couple of little issues because I can see where the debate's going a little bit that I was always guilty of is you always assume everybody knows everything about what you're doing. One thing you need to reemphasize over and over again about the dynamic of, well, you don't have to spend it this way. Well, the only reason we're in that boat is we tried the dedicated specific tax three times and it failed every time because the vote threshold is so high on a specific tax that it will never pass for anything in a state, probably anything in the country at this point. But, so the only reason you're going for this measure is because the voter threshold gives us potential to pass it. I think you need to emphasize that because they try to play the gotcha with that statement and there's a bunch of people in this town that weren't around for the first measures and saw the history of how we got here. So I would encourage you to bring that up. The other thing, you mentioned the League of California Cities, Kyle. One of the greatest presentations I ever attended to at one of the annual conferences was a really old economist and he didn't have, he said, I have no PowerPoint. This is up, this is down. And he said, he said something that I never forgot. And he said, people will pay for what they truly want. No matter where you go, people will pay for what they truly want. So what I want to encourage you to do tonight is stop gnashing teeth over the value of the tax. All you're doing is giving the voters an opportunity to choose to pay for what they really want. That's all you're making a decision on tonight. You're not justifying the tax one way or another. You're just saying, am I going to give my citizens the right to make this choice? So it doesn't matter what any of us think of the tax tonight, but I say you absolutely need to give the citizens of this town a choice because even the biggest opponents can't deny that in this country today, people want a choice. And I think not putting on the ballot would be more unjust than somebody that opposes it for any other reason. But I say put it on the ballot and let the voters decide.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment from the floor? And here comes.
Denise Gorman. I think your biggest challenge for getting this passed is to get it out to the people in the town, in the city. I've talked to a number of people because I'm really in favor of the pool. They have no clue what's going on. They don't get the newspaper, they're not on Facebook, they don't do the swap sheet. So that will be your biggest challenge too, is to get the message out. And the other question I have regarding the design of the pool, you mentioned about the grant pool. Will that be?
It's the vision for jumping off, if you want to call it, jumping off the diving board into it when we get there.
Okay, because it was really overkill in some areas and a waste of money in a lot of areas.
There's no purpose in having a drawing or design plans or anything like that even initiated until the voters have had the right to tell us if this is at the same priority level that we feel it is. And if that's the case, then the key is then we can spin up, using that as the original vision and taking public comment and input the same way we did during SPP, during that grant process. You know, me and Mr. Strand have, I think, butted heads at least four different times that I can remember over indoor versus outdoor because I've always advocated for indoor and then somebody else advocates for outdoor. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm right or really wrong. It means that those are the types of conversations that we know would occur. You know, the Penny Pool site was selected for SPP because of the piping and the underground services that were already in place that made it more effective. Does that still apply if we're applying in terms of dollars and spending dollars? Would it be more advantageous at perhaps the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex versus outside Freedom Park? There's a lot of other questions that open up. SPP had a limiting focus that we had to keep inside the box of. And then if the citizens agree with our direction, then it would be a larger discussion.
The other thing is when you push this sales tax onto the citizens, you got to baby talk them. You got to keep it really simple. The more complicated you make it, they're going to turn off. So that's my only comment.
Thanks, Denise.
Thanks, Denise. And we'll say when it comes back to council comments. Is there any other public comment from the floor? Okay, is there any public comment on the phones? Caller, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As related to what's being put forward tonight, which is actually just the language of the ballot measure itself, I want to say that if people who are actually listening and paying attention, they're hearing a classic example of doublespeak coming from the council chambers. And I'll point out exactly why I say that. You've made sure that at least twice you've had your attorney, who is always, you know, the voice of legal authority supposedly, say that this is a general sales tax and elaborate on that and make sure that everyone hears it said that they can spend this money on anything that they want. So I dare you to put up the language of the ballot measure if it's not so up there because all I see is the white screen. I've got it in front of me and it says, quote, that they're going to provide funding for six specific things on this ballot measure. Six, very specific. And then, of course, they throw in other city services, which is, I'm sure the lawyers' input to make sure that you can claim to call it a general sales tax. But just look at it and just be, you know, have some common sense people that are listening here tonight. They said, we want it for fire services. We want it to get a new pool. We want it for emergency medical response, which is again, fire services because they run out to your house every time EMT is called for. We want it for street repair, which I have no idea why we're supposed to have plenty of money in Measure V. We want it for recreation programs. Count them up, you've got six there. And that's a very specific list. It should be, of course, a special tax, but they learned the trick years ago with Measure V and how to make it sound like a general tax that sits here with, of course, included an oversight committee dedicated to making sure they only spend it on these six things. If that's not specific, I don't know what is. So once again, city is telling you, hoping you'll believe one thing while they're telling you something else. What they really are saying, if you look at the bottom line two, it's going to get $5.9 million every year and supposedly it's going to go for nine years, just like Measure V L was supposed to go for five and then they extended it for eight. They just want another $6 million. And if you, once you ever spend any time listening to Ron Strand in the last couple of meetings, you'll hear, you know, the primary concern in Ron Strand's mind and obviously some council members is just more money, more money, more money. Well, I can tell you, and Mr. Miller needs to listen, the county is not going to get 1% sales tax, the city is not going to get 1% sales tax. We're sick of being taxed to death like Mr. Porter basically talked about. And especially when you want to overtax us, when this fire services thing, which I will address in the next issue, is not even an actual need. The city has enough money to pay for that. But even as it stands, they're overstating the need and trying to abscond with more money for that, even just for that than they really have to have. So if you can't be trusted to present it forthrightly and accurately and be honest with us about it, then how in the world would anybody vote for it? I certainly am not. I'll be telling everybody I know not to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment on the phones? Seeing none, thank you everyone for your comments. We'll go ahead and bring it back to council. The council comments. And since we know Kyle's going to have twice as much, I'll start with Scott and see if he's got anything to say before we let Kyle unleashed.
I'd just like to start with, you know, when it comes to the pool, and you touched on the fact that, you know, with the grant, we were held within certain parameters and restrictions and had been a disadvantaged area. And so this gives the city that opportunity to put it where we want it, build it, you know, how we want it. And the original pool design was kind of, I wouldn't say minimized, but it was narrowed down to a, you know, fairly reasonable pool. There was variations from, you know, pretty outlandish down to minimum and meeting the schools swim team needs and so. But I like the fact that it gives us the opportunity to, you know, build it and not have parameters, you know, put on by the state and limit us in any of those areas. And some of these costs that we're seeing that are coming before the city with the fire and fire services, these are costs that we are going to be, you know, responsible for. So, you know, I would almost put that as a need. It's not so much a want, but it's a need for the city. Some of these other wants are good wants from the public and I think that if people truly want these things and are willing to pay for them, I think this is a good measure to be put on the ballot this fall. That's all I have for this at this moment.
I just want to make one thing clear to the public. This is not something, we are pushing this on you. So we want to give you this opportunity, as Mr. Holloway said, so that you make a decision depending on what this community has requested the city council to do. So city of Ridgecrest had a survey and people came back with so many requests and they wanted us to take care of that. So we need to find revenues for that. So this is the only option we have at this point. So it is for the citizen voters to decide whether you want all these facilities. If so, you are going to vote for this measure or not. So having said that, so legally, there is no way we can specify or allocate this money for different items.
Correct. It has to be general fund money. These are just the listing of items that could be used or the council could consider if the measure passes for what the expense may be.
So Penny Pool is one of the items we are considering under this $5.9 million?
This is something that if the measure passes, that the council then can consider. But to specifically make a promise right now would not be appropriate under this general tax measure. To make a specific promise could make this now a specific tax which has a higher threshold for passing. So really this is a general fund, sales tax, and if it passes, this is what the community or what the council can consider in the future. Now, there's also safety valves that we put in this. It has a nine-year sunset oversight, but staff is keenly aware that in two years, we're going to be looking at, should we renew Measure V? So if the community is not happy with what the council does with this measure, if it passes, they can speak again, you know, to the council by not renewing Measure V if it's brought up and you have at least three council elections between now and when this measure is going to expire if it passes. So there's a lot of safety valves to make sure that whatever the intent, whatever the potential uses may be, the community can watch and they can decide several times on whether or not they believe if this passes, if the council's doing the wise thing with this additional funding.
Okay, thank you. So I think in the presentation somewhere you mentioned, you talked about a nine-year bond for Penny Pool.
Correct. I did reach out to our bond attorney and ask whether or not with this funding, if we could bond and rebuild Penny Pool and look into the numbers, yes, we can. We can accomplish a lot.
Okay, so that is separate from what we are proposing to use from this tax measure?
If it passes, council could consider using that funding to take a bond to build the pool. And from our consultant, we can bond for nine years, pay the pool off. And then, of course, obviously, the community gets to decide in nine years if this passes, whether or not they want to continue that. But I was concerned that if council could consider this in the future, if we could accomplish that, and I do believe we can.
We talked about filling the vacancies in the police department. I mean, we increased the salaries for the police officers.
Yes.
Not filling those four vacancies, now we want to bring them back because we need police officers. So it would be nice if we can provide some statistics or some data, why we need those four officers back so that public are comfortable voting for this. The same way, we need to provide some data for the fire stations, why we need two fire stations. So so many people ask me, so why, how can you say we need four police officers more? So what is the data? What is the? Right now, we have so many police officers, so why do we need four more? So we need some data for the public to substantiate what we are requesting for.
I do plan on, back in April of '21, we did hire a consulting firm that was hired by the rest of the contract cities to assist us with the fire negotiations. We, the city, went further and I had them do a city Ridgecrest fire study that was completed in April of '21. There have been several comments on social media asking questions about our current staffing levels and whether or not we could have one station, whether or not we should have, remain two stations. So I did reach out to our consultant and I am going to have them come back during our next meeting to report on that fire service study for the city of Ridgecrest so then we can at least provide the community the opportunity to hear what the consultant had to say, to be able to ask questions. This last week, we did post that fire survey on our social media account. And so there's been, you know, some significant response from the community on that. So I do plan on bringing that back. I can bring the chief of police in at another meeting and discuss our staffing levels and where we're currently at and why is it important that we have those four additional officers and what that means to our ability to respond to emergency calls for service so we can schedule that down the road.
Yeah, that would really help the public to make an informed decision so that they can, they are willingly voting for this tax measure. If left to me, I will vote because since I want all these facilities for the, all these, what is, I mean, the filling of the four vacancies as well as the fire station. So I personally want, so I will vote for that. But public wants to know how we are supporting all these requests. So that would be very useful if we can make a presentation for them.
Yes, I can make that happen.
Okay, because I know Measure V passed and we did a great job with Measure V. Same way, if this sales tax pass, and I'm pretty sure we will be able to do a good job meeting the requirements of this community. So, but again, sorry.
No, sorry. Go ahead.
As I said, it's a choice we are giving to you. It is not something we are imposing on you. So if this doesn't pass, we are not going to shut the doors of City Hall or anything like that. So things will move on and we will find some other ways to find the money to meet the requirements of this community. Thank you.
Kyle, I'm going to let you-
Kyle, I'm gonna let you be the last one because you didn't get a chance to join in the last conversation. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go next and let you be the featured speaker. First, thank you for the public that came out and spoke and for the rest of the comments of the council. I think there's some real important things that we just have to understand about how we got here and where we're at. Because Mr. Holloway was accurate, as well as Councilman Rajaratanam, that this is going to be a community choice. And when we talk about community choice, it's time for this community to decide what does this community want. And let's be clear, nobody up here is happy about the idea of presenting a tax measure in what may end up six months from now being one of the most difficult inflationary environments that we've ever experienced, at least in my generation. I wasn't here for the 80s. Tom, you probably remember the 18% mortgages and savings accounts, and I wasn't around then. But I can tell you that inflation is not a joke and we all are feeling it. Every single person inside of our community, as well as every single person up here on the dais and our staff and our policemen and our firefighters and everyone. Nobody is going, this is the time to do this. But everyone is saying one thing, which is that if we continue to fail to do this, our community is going to lose the opportunity that it has in front of us. And that's what's really at the heart of what this choice is about. Nobody is dispassionate about the idea of additional costs to our citizens. Nobody is dispassionate about the idea of what this is going to cost us individually. Nobody is dispassionate about how inflation is making people feel. But one thing everyone generally is passionate about is their home and their community and in seeing it continue to grow and thrive. And right now, that opportunity is in front of us. We have been experiencing that for the last two years and the momentum we've gained from the base construction, expanding our communication, building out and looking for grants, finding opportunities to build our community and working to solve problems. You just heard tonight about the facilitation and the amount of work that continues to go into the water project. And the idea that we may actually be making incredibly huge strides with water. Why? Because we stopped arguing and we got to work and we started working together. We've continued to do that as a council very diligently for the last two years in our communication because we saw how we were going to get to a solution. And that solution is now going to be in front of the citizens to decide. I will be advocating heavily for it because I believe in solving the revenue problem so that we can start to continue to build out what the future of this community is going to be. But we don't solve the revenue problem without an additional tax measure. And I don't want to present a half a measure and a quarter measure. And that's why, after all the discussions, and Mr. Miller was absolutely accurate in that there's been a lot of discussions, he could tell you about the bazooka discussion. And the idea that we don't want to have our city in a capacity again where the county can come in and add a 1% measure, or somebody else can come in and talk to us about adding measures, because you know what? No matter what, at the end of the day, a 2% total measure between Measure V and potentially this measure is what this community needs to ensure that we can provide the services that this community expects. And guess what, citizens? It's going to be up to you to decide now if you're prepared to invest in what Ridgecrest is asking for. And as Councilman Rajaratanam said, you may have the choice to choose not to. And you're right, the city will continue. But the city will continue to have the same challenges that we have. We talked about the four police officers. We have, we have a need. If anybody's looking around and says that there isn't a statewide crisis in law enforcement, I'd be desperate to have that argument with them. And so the idea of me not being able to fund four additional officers, for me, is not what this community needs. This community needs greater support for our police officers, continued support for our firefighters, as well as continuing to make sure that we are building out the services that this community desires. Nobody is happy about the idea that we're trying to do this in a November 8, 2022 election with 9.1% inflation at the current stage. And I guarantee I am the only one in this room that has seen their 401K get decimated. But I'm still going to stand here and put forth the best effort for this community. That's what we were elected to do. Now, you could do the wordsmithing game as they would love to play and, you know, English language is what English language is. And this measure is very clear in that it says such as. Such as means exactly what our attorney and what we've been saying. We can make no promises. It is a general fund measure. But what I can do is exactly what I am doing. I will gladly stand and put my political reputation and my reputation behind my words. That is, I have said from the day I started in this crazy journey, I got four beautiful children at home. I got the chance to see one of them swim in Penny Pool. I hope, I pray that their day comes that I can see all four of them swimming in Penny Pool, whatever that Penny Pool is, wherever it is in this community. But to be a part of this community, that's a hope. I've said it, I've committed to it, but can I hold the rest of my council? No. It'll be a general fund measure. We'll be up here talking. So everyone out there who loves to throw social media, let's play social media get 'em games with words and such. Oh, I said such. Yeah. Such as words. There are six things on here that we believe are things that are important to you as a community. And you can vote to choose to say they are important to you or not. At the end of the day, we're going to have another four or five months of this. We're going to be talking, we're going to be meeting. And the most important message I hope that our community hears from this is nobody up here is dispassionate about the impact of this. But everyone up here, I believe, is passionate about the future of our community and making sure that we secure it now, to make sure that when the momentum continues, that we are gaining from this construction, that this community comes out on the other side of this stronger and better than ever and ready to build on to the future of what Ridgecrest can be, not what Ridgecrest doesn't want to be because of isolation and, shall we call them, wordsmithing. Kyle, you're up.
Oh, Lord. How am I supposed to come after that?
Because you're even better than I am.
Oh, I don't know about that. So I'll just start by saying, well, a few things. First, I am optimistic. I think that this proposal is optimism for the City of Ridgecrest. Chip was correct. This is something being presented to the public. I appreciate you phrasing it like that. I have a lot of notes on my thoughts and that was not something that I was going to say before you said it. I don't want to look back, and I think I've said this before, I don't want to be, I was elected to be on the seat, I don't want to look back in a few years and think that I didn't take action out of fear of how I was being viewed at the moment. And I think that those of you who've been on the council, Chip or Mr. Wicknick, you know what that's like. Sometimes that view in the moment, it's hard to look away from. It's hard not to let that affect you. And if I've heard, I think you, Chip, say, and one other elected member, not to this council, they said, you know, I wish at the time, I wish at the time when I was there, I did more. I don't want to be that guy. I don't want to accept or adopt a nihilistic view of the world or a nihilistic view of my community. And by that, I mean that I don't, I want to become anti-growth to the point that I'm anti-family. I don't want to be the kind of person who is, who doesn't have a can-do attitude, let's fix something. Well, we've heard all going all the way back to the 80s, probably before that, when the city was incorporated, it was never, it was never taxed correctly. This is something that's been presented over and over. You've heard everybody on this dais and even before that, they've all said it. It's all been said. So you don't need me to hear, you don't need to hear from me reciting the numbers in a bulleted form. You don't need to hear that. I'm guessing what you want to know is what is your council members, the ones that you guys elected, how do they feel? How do they feel? What are their views? How are they going to approach a problem? And do you trust them? That's what it comes down to. That's why I started to tell Mr. Wicknick, you know, we, any council could make promises and any council could change those as the vote changed. But man, I can't imagine a world where that would happen. I can't imagine a world where a council commits to something that a whole community deeply wants and then all of a sudden we turn around and go away from it. Not a council like this has been so dedicated, so intent on fixing the issues in front of them. So I quit reading off my notes a while ago. But you know, we saw an influx of cash come into the city. I believe it was ARPA funds. And what you didn't see was, you didn't see your council misallocate those funds. You didn't see the staff advocate just to go ahead and do BS with the money. No, what you saw were town halls. What you saw was a list that was racked and stacked. That's, that's the sort of council that you're looking at. And so I'm speaking for all of them. But for me personally, you know, I met this with, I think skepticism is the right word beforehand, when there was even any kind of conversation floating, when we knew the fire was coming. When the outgoing, before Supervisor Peters, before he stepped down, or before he stepped up to take Mr. Gleason's spot, I talked to Mick for a moment. We were sitting on his porch, looking across the valley, and he said, man, I do not envy you. You have a problem coming, man, and it is bigger than everything else you think you're facing. I said, oh, Mick, what are you talking about? He goes, fire's coming, man. Fire's coming. It's going to be big. And good luck, he said. Clinked a beer with me and he ended the conversation. So we know what's in front of us. We've seen all the, we hear about the issues. I've stood at the baseball fields, I've stood at the softball fields. I've stood there watching to see who, you know, who was going to get a strike and who was going to ball and had parents come up behind me and ask me, hey, man, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? I've had my own wife ask me why there's no bathrooms at the softball field, over and over and over. She is not happy about that. But I'm not on the Parks and Rec Committee. The moral of the story is, we get approached constantly. And I think that if we up here, we're not adopting a positive attitude to get things done, you know, yeah, I would question that if I was the public. I would look at my representatives and wonder, what are you doing? What is the purpose of you? You know, it came up earlier with, we talked about trash. We talked about many things. It's because your council's operating and we're willing to shrug our shoulders and shed some of the negativity, that's fine. There should be some negativity thrown at a council. It should never be all positive. If that's happening, there's not critical thinking. If everybody in the room is just agreeing on the same thing, that's not good. So it is good that there is some pushback. So I guess I've, I've rambled quite a bit and I had two pages of notes here of stuff I wanted to go over. But the moral of the story is that I personally support this, this measure. I support this measure because what this does is tries to tackle issues that we've seen for a very long time. When I say we, I mean councils and councils going back. And I think it's important that the public understands that we're all normal people sitting up here. I don't, maybe you guys are, but if you're multimillionaires, it's news to me. And I don't know if you guys are living, you know, you're living in mansions that I'm not aware of. But, you know, these are, these are normal people sitting up here feeling the pains as a community. And at least I'm saying, this is still, this is important to me to tackle this. And I think it's important that you know how your representatives feel. You feel the skepticism or you feel the positivity. And so I think I've expressed my support, but also you understand where I'm coming from in that I'm feeling the inflation. But the issues of this city, when inflation settles, when we see gas prices get to a sustainable point, because statistically, that's what happens with the economy. The problems of the city, we're still going to face them. They're still going to be right here. They're not going away. We're still not going to have a pool, right? If we lose, if we lose a fire station, that's going to hurt the community. Just even, even if it's just in medical response times. We, I heard the talk of insurance and we know that we can't directly quantify that. But man, if you got a city manager sitting over there who has been in public service for, you know, for many, many, many years, telling you, I've talked to consultants and we don't really want to play with this. I think that we might want to listen to that. That's a logical conclusion. And I told somebody else, and I think it was Scott, we were sitting in a conversation, and I said, Scott, I can assume and talk to people all day long, but there is nobody, nobody in the city who knows more about how this city is operating, the status of it, better than the staff. But that's not a possibility. Nobody could possibly know as much as the staff. So if the staff comes to its council and says, look, fellas, we got problems. We need to go fix them. I think it's our duty to find a way to fix them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if you have, still counsel.
Sure. I just want to add that, you know, listening to everybody talk and going back and forth within my own head, there's two of the most positive aspects about this measure. One, the money's going directly back to this community and addressing the needs and wants of the community. I think that's a huge thing. There's very few other ways in which to, that you can find money and revenue that comes directly back to that community. And second, it allows others who visit and help share the cost to maintain, you know, to help maintain and improve our city, which in turn continues to draw these people back. So when I was out of town a couple of times here in the last two weeks, and I shopped a little bit up north, Bishop, you know, I paid taxes, that money went to something in their community. And I think that's a good thing. I wasn't, you know, I'm not offended by that at all. I like going up there. Same thing going to Lancaster. So when people come into this town and they shop and we're going into these other towns, it also dawned on me that, you know, with our, the expansion that we've done with, you know, we have Home Depot, we have Super Walmart, we have Tractor Supply, these other communities are relying more on Ridgecrest as a hub. And they're going to be coming here and shopping. I talked to probably three or four people in the last couple of days that were from Olancha and one today that was from Bishop. And they're coming to Ridgecrest and utilizing services. And so these people are going to help share on the costs of improving our city. And they benefit from it because it makes it a better place for, and a place for them to want to come. So I see it as a win-win. I'm leery of taxes. I don't like taxes. But this is one tax measure that I see is, for me, a kind of a no-brainer because it infuses so much positivity back into this community. But anyway, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Having heard from the council, is there a motion for approval of the resolution calling for the Ridgecrest general municipal election, including the ballot measure? I believe that's the motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratanam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
We have four ayes, motion carries. And Mayor, if I may, I would like to point out also that along with calling, approving these resolutions, please keep in mind that we also have our campaign time open right now. It opened up on Monday. So if anybody wants to pull papers for council or mayor, we're open right now until August 11th. So come down and see me. And that's part of this as well.
There will be two seats for the council and the mayor's roll.
Correct.
In November.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that out there as well.
Okay. Next item is item number six. This is introduction and first reading.
Mr. Mayor, you missed one of the resolutions.
I missed one of the resolutions?
There's one more, one more resolution for consolidation.
Yeah, you have, it's action number two.
Sorry, it's not, it's not in my, okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution to consolidate the...
Nope, it is down there. Excuse me.
Resolution 22.xx, a resolution to consolidate the...
To consolidate, yes.
Is, I'm just making sure I got my words right. Consolidate the measures?
Consolidate with the county for the election.
To consolidate with the county for the election.
Yes. Election services, yep.
For the election services. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
I have a motion and, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratanam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Now, for the record, Martin, that's because it wasn't on my script.
Yeah. My fault.
That's okay. You had backup.
I'm like, it's not on the script. Got it. Okay. I should have, I should have actually read the packet. Next is item number six, ordinance, item number six. This is introduction and first reading by title only and ordinance of the City of Ridgecrest City Council, adding Division Three to Article Three of Chapter Nine of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code, imposing a transactions and use, sales tax locally controlled for city services to be administered by the State Board of Equalization onto the November 8th, and to be approved on the November 8th, 2022 ballot. the November 8th, 2022 ballot. Attorney?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, this would be the second stage in preparation for the election. This ordinance, if approved by you today, would amend the municipal code to put the measure and the sales tax, along with all of its requirements, into the code, should the voters agree to subject themselves to tax and elect the measure by more than 50% vote. The ordinance carries all of the requirements, including the audits, including the Oversight Commission Committee. And it's basically a mirror of the ordinance that past tax measures were approved, through which past measures were approved. The ordinance carries a provision, obviously, that will invalidate it or not make it effective should the election turn out not to pass the measure. But if the measure passes, this ordinance would become effective upon certification, well, upon certification, it would become in effect, and 30 days later would be, would be effective. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any council questions? I didn't think there would be. Is there any public questions or comments? Any on the phones? Okay. We'll bring it back to council. I don't believe there's anything else for discussion. Do I have a motion to waive the reading in full of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, adding to the Ridgecrest Municipal Code concerning a temporary transactions and use sales tax locally controlled to be administered by the State Board of Equalization?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
And then, do I also have a motion to introduce by title only, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, adding to the Ridgecrest Municipal Code, concerning temporary transactions and use sales tax locally controlled to be administered by the State Board of Equalization?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Yeah, motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Next item is item number seven. This is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2203, an ordinance of the Ridgecrest City Council, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. Ms. Charlon.
This item was brought to you at the last meeting. Kelly Bruton, the Assistant Finance Director, presented it to you. This is just a second reading. If you have any questions, I'm available for you. But otherwise, it was pretty explained at the last meeting.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. Is there any public discussion? Any public discussion on the phones? Seeing none. Bring it back to council. Do I have a motion to waive the reading in full of ordinance number 2203, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
And do I have a motion to adopt by title only, ordinance number 2203, an ordinance of the Ridgecrest City Council, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay. We are on to committee reports. City Org met, but I was, I was under the COVID weather. And so I did not attend. Do you want a report from City Org? Or, I mean, Peggy's not here, Megan's not here.
Yeah, primarily, we discussed the Wayfinder signs. And we brought a, some renditions of what those signs may be. A little background, this has to do with the potential name change that was recommended on a few months back. And when we began to meet with some of the affected stakeholders, an actual other idea came up. And that was, how do we help our local museums and some of our key locations within town, people find them? And so Isabel, I guess she just left. She missed this. She could have given the, probably better presentation on it. She worked with the company to come up with some designs. And so those designs were presented to the committee. One specific design was selected by the committee for us to kind of, you know, move forward with. Our direction now is to, you know, obviously now meet with the museums and begin to discuss what the concept might be like, and then move forward with like a public survey, then eventually work our way back to council for a, for maybe a final decision on which way we move forward. So that was the primary focus of that meeting.
Excellent. Finance Committee was myself and Councilman Rajaratnam tapped in for Councilman Hayman. And we had a, again, great discussion with our finance department. There's a lot to be optimistic about in terms of our finances. The most important aspect of the finances is that we continue to run a very tight ship. And that has allowed us to make sure that we are focusing on getting Measure V dollars out through Public Works and getting the things done that we need to get done. And we're continuing to see the benefits of the construction, just in terms of general sales tax, as well as TOT starting to rebound. We spent a good amount of time talking about a couple of directional things that we think finance needs to be focusing in on in the future. One of those is the Equipment Replacement Fund, which is something that's been in the works for a bit, which is us addressing, how do we make sure that we have the funds and resources available to maintain and replace services that we were able to gain in the short run, either through ARPA or through other things? How do we make sure that we don't continue the deferred maintenance, I'm going to be honest, the deferred maintenance calamity that we, that we've put ourselves into? You know, I still remember when I was first hired, first hired on, when I was first elected on, talking to the officers, you know. I'm so proud of this. Every time I drive by and I see a new car, a new officer in a new car, it puts a smile on my face. And I know it's putting a smile on my officer's face. And, you know, a good, a good police force is protecting me and my family. And I'm feeling good about it. And that's the kind of things that, we don't want to put ourselves in the position that five years from now, we're playing, oh my God, with the budget in terms of our ability to replace police vehicles, or our ability to replace flooring, or carpeting, or, or dividers, or playground roofs, or, you know. There's a myriad of lists that we, we've done this, kick the proverbial can down the road with maintenance. And we're looking at bringing forward something that we can have a more thorough conversation. And it actually goes right back to the conversation about, you know, the measure that we just had, is, is this is an example of those other ideas, those other needs, that a revenue solution allows us to finally start to make sure that we have the moving forward capabilities of what a 30,000-person community looks like. I'm not wanting to get on my soapbox again, but I, but I'm going to for just a moment. I was, I was investigating Aberdeen, South Dakota, for professional reasons. And it's about 30,000 people. And I'm looking at it and, you know, going, what's similar? And, and I discovered it was the second largest city in the state of South Dakota. And you go, hmm. And in Ridgecrest, 30,000 people is, is a fly on the back of the horse, of the dog's butt in California. But in another state, it's the second most populous area in the community. And it just helps put it in perspective how much we, we don't actually kind of think of ourselves as what we should be, which is the hub of Eastern Kern. And we should act like that in our city and our services and what we do. And this is another example of that, when you talk about making sure that when a police vehicle has lived its, its good life, that it's put out to pasture, and another one is put in the hands of our good officers, so they can do their work. But that's just one example. So that was one thing that's been talked about, and hopefully we'll see here in the next couple of months. And then the second one, it draws back to, are we using our dollars the most efficiently? And that was our investment policy. I understand for a myriad of reasons why the city may not have chosen to have short-term or other investments with cash. But I believe that the, especially as we're looking at the inflationary market, we're looking at the economic conditions, that making sure that we've at least reviewed and decided at the council level, what our direction, you know, is going to be towards staff on terms of investments, is something that should be discussed and looked at. And that we're, we're looking forward to bringing back and having a larger conversation on, you know, we have, we have a bunch of money sitting in wastewater that we know is going to be used for wastewater. And we're thrilled, absolutely thrilled, that we're going to be using it on wastewater. But wastewater is still two years away, probably, you know, before we're going to start seeing some, maybe even three years away, before we start seeing some really substantial bills hitting. And what are we doing with the cash in the interim? Is that kind of question, is, should we be doing something else with it, even on the short run? Me personally, I'd be thrilled to have a short-run investment policy that says the city's going to pick up an extra $50,000, and it gives me one shade structure. And I can give it to Parks and Rec and say, hey, as, in addition to CDBG, I got you a little, a little slice of investment cheesecake that's going to let you knock one more thing off the list. Or giving it to finance and letting them make sure that they have all the software and the tools they need to be able to monitor it. And what is this look like? And so that's the other kind of discussion item. I think I covered most of it. I'm going to let Solomon jump in there. Is anything else from the meeting?
We also talked about our consultant, HDL.
Oh, yes.
Doing business license tags, business license audit, and TOT audit, I think. So, yeah. So that is coming up soon, probably.
Yeah. And my fellow councilmen's being gentle. We talked about, it's about time for them to deliver on certain audits that we have been told about for at least 18 months since Solomon and I were, were elected. You know, the TOT audit has been pending. And I don't, I didn't use both quotes, pending. So I think that it was, that finance is well aware, and our staff is well aware. And the direction was, let's get some, some of these numbers. So HDL, if you're listening, listen to Sherry.
Yeah, I'm not on the committee, so that's why I don't.
Yeah, I understand. I can say it. Listen to Sherry. We're, we're talking about it. Anything else from finance? I don't think so. Definitely pleased with, with the way that the community is moving. Economic development?
Yes. We met and discussed, it wasn't a long meeting, but we discussed a few things. One of them is the Kmart building and our efforts, the staff's very valiant efforts at getting somebody into that Kmart building. I don't think that we're completely solid yet on who, on the tenants. But it's, it's in progress. And the second thing we discussed was potential, and it's a long conversation. It's not something we could just do in one committee meeting. And I'm sure eventually, if it ever came down to it, which is maybe a year from now, we'd have to come back to the council. But that is that, I'd like to see that downtown, I'd like to see the city make, make an effort towards changing that downtown Balsam area. I expressed it, I expressed it in a committee meeting. I said it proudly. These are my beliefs, my feelings, my personal feelings. And that is that I think that we need to see a change. We need, I would love to see parking change and go to the middle of the street. I'd love to see, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lay out everything that I discussed, because it's just a discussion. But I have ideas and I have thoughts. But that's all they are until we can actually, you know, until the rubber meets the road. But I expressed those. And that was, I think, Solomon, unless I missed something, as the extent of the meeting, it wasn't a very long meeting.
I think we also talked about role of city in community events.
Yes, 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 yes. I expressed my, my want and desire for the City of Ridgecrest to take a stronger, more active role in the planning and execution of, of community events. We've seen that same sentiment echoed here up on this dais by either other council members or the, or the city staff. And that is that we understand that public participation, volunteer participation is often declining. We know that folks still want the services. They still desire the services that they see. They want the events. And so I think that your city council needs to listen and pay attention. And we need to, when we can, have the city staff involve themselves on whatever that event may be. And I think that that would end up, you know, in a, in a Parks and Rec committee type situation. I have several that come to mind. Again, they're my wants and desires, so I'm not going to just spew those out. But that was the discussion.
Going back to the Kmart building, I think Megan mentioned, we have a letter of intent from Ross as anchor for that building.
Yep. And they are an anchor tenant, which is important for the, because the building, the discussion is, and I always hesitate, Ron told me this a long time ago, don't count your chickens until the building permits are pulled. So I always hesitate to mention it. But Ross is an anchor tenant. And there are other two entities that have promised to come on as long as Ross is there. Again, those promises mean nothing to me until we see building permits. That's all we have for the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. Other committees, boards, or commissions? I know East Kern Economic Alliance met last week. Megan is not here, so I, I don't know.
No, she didn't attend. We had a due date on that DCIP grant. So that took precedence.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't, I don't have anything else to report from it. I can find out from Dave before in future one. Any other committees, boards, or commissions?
I have KernCog tomorrow. And I will have the, the Kern, the Air Pollution Board coming up.
Okay. Solomon, anything?
Nope.
City manager report?
Yeah, I just have one item. Megan did submit the DCIP grant on Monday. And we should hear something back from the government, either in mid-August or first part of September. And we did, the application was for replacing the grass at the softball fields with artificial turf. I know we had, Megan spent a significant amount of time on that, as well as Travis Reed. He helped with, I think he got us to a 30% design on the facility, which should help us in the scoring process, as it being a shovel-ready project. So we'll see. It's, she did a good job on it. And if it doesn't, if we don't get it this year, I think we can maybe skinny it up next year and resubmit it. So.
Well, I would, once, huh?
Yeah.
That's exciting. I just want to commend city staff again. I, I don't think everyone understands how important SPP was to us. But our, our lack of being able to succeed at SPP has put such an incredible fire under our staff and their knowledge, and how much they've learned over the last two years of that process. I remember there was, you know, questions about how fast do people learn the roles? And I just, huge kudos to Megan and, and the team that worked on getting these in. Between Clean California and now working on DCIP, and the other, all the other stuff that we've been working on, the FONGs, the support for wastewater and everything else. You know, the best way you grow is you, you take advantage of the opportunities that are placed in front of you. And DCIP, while some people might say, you know, why would you want artificial turf on those softball fields? But the idea that we can be able to make such a continuous improvement into Lee Roy Jackson Sports Complex. such a continuous improvement in the Lee Roy Jackson Sports Complex, as we're doing through ARPA, and then potentially Clean California, and then potentially DCIP is beautiful.
Yeah, the two main reasons for that that grant is obviously, you know, sustainability. We can reduce our water usage of about fifty-one acre-feet a year, and we can also, with our current footprint, allow more use, because we're not going to have to let the fields rest, we don't have all that damage we have to address. And so there are a couple of good, couple of good reasons for that. Like I forgot to mention, I think, you know, Heather also helped out with the with the SECA environmental report on that. So it was it was clearly a group effort between, even including Nerissa, so.
And I just want to commend the entire staff.
Yeah, they got it done, yeah, they got it done fairly quick for how extensive that turned out to be.
And if if Congressman McCarthy or any member of his staff is out there, DCIP's been submitted, we would certainly love, once again, your support for the City of Ridgecrest, and I know it'll be there, so. His staff knows, I know they do, I just, if I can throw a shout out out there and tell them, we appreciate it, you know.
Yeah, we we reached out to his staff for whatever they could do. I know we had help from Captain Vaughn and the installation. We had to have a support letter from them, and so I do believe if whatever McCarthy's office can do, they will.
I'm sure they will. Okay, future agenda items. The only one that I know that that was discussed is I know that, I think, equipment in the equipment and replacement, I think, we talked about September. Yeah, I think, the September meeting. Again, just to continue to make sure the community understands some of the things that we're talking about, that we can do as a result of the measure, or the potential measure. Anything else? Any other future agenda items? Okay, it's eight thirty-two, so what's the dividing point? Is it every fifteen minutes?
We didn't do it.
Oh. No, no? Okay, well, then I'll have to find a way to talk for at least thirteen minutes. Mayor and council comments. Any final council comments for Scott?
None here.
Gentlemen?
Good discussion on the sales tax measure. I'm a conservative, but I make exceptions now and then, and this is one of them, so.
I feel the same.
Yeah, I mean, our, look, look at our.
I think we all feel the same way.
Yeah. Look at our base. I mean, the base is, the reconstruction after that is done, so it will be world-class base, and then there would be an issue of recruitment and retention. If you want to retain these people, we need to have quality of life, and if you need to have quality of life, these are the things we have to do. So I I fully support this measure, so I take an exception here on the conservative side, so. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, so I guess I'd like to add to that, but first I'll say, thank you, Alyssa Baker, for having your son come out Maverick. That was pretty cool to see, and thank you, council, and and Mr. Strand for taking the time to talk to him, and I think it, I think it made his, I think it made his whole week, so I really appreciate you guys taking that time. For that, I I want to say that same, along the same lines, you know, when I when I got on the city council, I came in and I was appointed and then elected with a certain viewpoint on how politics should be conducted. And I think what happens is, you get in this job, and you sit at the seat, and you get presented with problems, not just by your staff, but by the community, and you realize that no longer do these problems fall into liberal or conservative camps. And I think that, and this is my opinion, I think that if you are the kind of person who puts them in a liberal-conservative camp, you're doing your community a disservice. I think that you're being linear, I think that you're not looking at the whole picture, and I think that most communities face this very thing, that, you know, the national politics and the state politics get so much attention because they grab headlines, and we have, we have one-liners out of popular representatives, and and that's what drives the news cycle, and so I think people pay attention to that. The the business of running a city and building a community and progressing it forward is a tedious and painful task. It takes a long time. It takes a lot of painful, slow work in committees. That hard work happens with the staff. The staff does most of the work, we get to sit up here and, you know, be positive and tell the community, you know, give the community our opinions as they give them to us and we echo them, but this is not, this is not an overnight process, and so what I what I hope to convey by my words earlier was that I would like to be the type of representative that meets the moment, and this is one of those moments. This is one of those moments where we ask the community, look, we understand you're going to make a choice, but it's my opinion that we we think we see the path. And I don't, I don't want to miss that moment, I don't want to miss that mark. I think that I'm, I do pay attention, paying, I mean, excruciating attention to national politics and state politics, and I'm watching our representatives on both the left and the right often miss the mark and not meet the moment. And I don't, at this local level, I don't want to be that guy. And I certainly don't want to be that guy in ten, fifteen years, no longer on the council, coming up to the podium and saying to a brand-new council, hey, guys, I wish I would have did more. I wish I would have told the public the truth, and that's the big one, just tell the public the truth. Be honest. Look, we're not having, we don't have the tax revenue, we never have, we don't get what we're supposed to have, and we have a whole bunch of things you guys want, and we can't give it to you. This is how we give it. Yes, you're going to have to dig deep. Yeah, those are all true statements, but there's a reason you vote. Through your vote, you get to decide where that money goes. That's the way it works. So I wanted to make sure that I, I got that point home, because I'm not quite sure that I said enough earlier.
You're making it tricky for me to follow you.
That's, that's my goal.
Man alive. Those are great words, like my fellow councilmembers. I I personally love the the statement that I've heard more than a few times, that there's no tax that Bruin doesn't love. I got news for you, I don't like taxes any more than he does, or he does, or he does, or she does. I got four kids to feed, and a mortgage, and everybody else like anything else, and, you know, I've been here, I've, you know, been here for eighteen and a half years, I don't like taxes anymore, next guy, but I I echo what Kyle said, which is that we have a choice to rise to the moment, and this community has a choice in front of us to rise to the moment as well. Our community, you know, Kyle said it great. The truth is that these problems have existed for a very, very long time. They didn't show up yesterday. I think one of the things that has made us a excellent council and having the type of relationship we're having with our staff and with our with our community is because we're not afraid to make the hard call. We've made the hard call with water, we've made the hard call with fire, we made the hard call with trash, we're making the hard call with with this measure. I mean, personally, I would, I I look in the mirror, and I'm very proud of of the the work that we're doing as a council, and proud of the work that we're doing as a as a city, because we are standing up and and trying to make what might be the hard call, the easy call is to just just agree with every bully out there that thinks that we're doing something wrong. But I I learned, you know, a long time ago, that I I wasn't going to worry about what the bullies and the narcissists and the isolationists and every other person that that thinks that there's something wrong with this community, you know, and that that we have to go and hide in a bunker and not do anything about continuing to grow and improve this community. I'm thrilled by what we're doing, and I I am proud to stand behind it. And so, yeah, there is no tax that I love, but I am willing to stand behind the hard decision to make this motion and this measure a priority in this election, whether it costs me my job or not, because it's important for this community. And that is why we were elected into these roles. With that, have a wonderful evening, best wishes, we'll see you August the third. Take care.
Thank you, everybody.